Call me Doral. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the stay in the city in which we live. Guide us this evening as we make our decisions in Christ's name.
Amen.
Okay, this is the November 26th, 2024, regular meeting of the Newnan City Council. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Appreciate everyone being here. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of November the 12th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion, motion of second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. I'd like to ask the staff to put all of the boards and commission appointments on the next agenda, please. Mr. Phillips, do you have anything this evening? Okay, I have one thing this evening under this, you can see under two appointments. The County Health Board or the Board of Health, as you all know, George Alexander, who's a council member here, was continuing to serve on that board. And I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but it should have been called by several different groups, but as an elected official position. Okay, so clearly he's not that. Gloria Barnes, who was my appointment to the board, left to go back to her town where she grew up, so she's moved away. She resigned from the board. So I would like to take George Alexander and move him from that elected spot, because George continues to have a passion for serving on the County Health Board, and put him in Gloria's spot. So I would ask council permission to do that this evening.
Make that motion, second.
Okay, motion second. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so that's done. Now, given that I've just done that, it opens up the elected official spot. So quickly raise your hand if you would like to fill that spot on the County Health Board. We have that, we do have that, we do have that obligation to fill it. It meets once, it meets five times a year. We have the meeting dates from George. They have a conference, I think, once a year. So I don't really, don't want to put anybody on the spot tonight, but at our, Mr. Corrick.
I'd be willing to, I'm still trying to find a replacement for my Three Rivers position though, so.
We have contacted other cities. We'll continue to contact that. I think we ought to end this discussion right now with a motion to nominate Mr. Corrick.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, that we nominate Mr. Corrick to fill that elected official's position. Any discussion?
It's a good one to be in. I was on it before George.
All of those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signed, like. Congratulations, thank you very much. We'll send you the dates.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, on to the next, which is new business. We have several requests to demolish structures. The first is Augusta Drive. Mr. Martin, how are you, sir?
I'm good.
Oh, I'm sorry, just one second, please. I'm going to ask Ms. Jenkins to announce our Newnan Youth Council attendees at tonight's meetings. If you'll hold on just one second, thank you, sir.
Yes. We have with us tonight members of the Newnan Youth Council, and they are, as far as please stand when I call your name. Corinne Terrell, Jr., Newnan High. Lila McDowell, Jr., Newnan High. Ara Kadham, sophomore, Woodward. Maddie Allen, sophomore, Northgate. And we also have an alum here. We have Ms. Franklin here.
Okay, thank you all for being here this evening. We appreciate your service. You've got the next, one, two, three, four, so if we'll just step through those, that'd be good.
First, we'll address 17 Augusta Drive. They only want to tear down a portion of this building. And I believe, yeah, we're here to speak on behalf of the.
Okay.
So just, yes, just that little portion there with the glass block windows is what they're proposing to demolish. The rest of the building is being rehabbed.
Right, I've been there, by there several times. Mr. Phillips, these should be public hearings, shouldn't they? Yeah, okay, so I'm.
They're advertised as such.
Right, it's been advertised as a public hearing. I'm going to open a public hearing at this time. This is for the demolition request at 17 Augusta Drive. So you're here tonight to talk about that issue?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Do we have any questions? If you'll state your name for the record.
I'm John Bynum.
Yes. Any questions of this? See how easy that was? Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone here who would like to speak for or against this demolition request, 17 Augusta Drive? I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion.
Make that motion.
Motion of second to approve the request. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. The next is 70 Farmer Street, and this is a public hearing on this, request for demolition.
Yes, sir. So this is the old grocery store on Farmer Street. They've recently completed the new structure and they wish to demolish this building. I believe the lots can become parking.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here who would like to speak to the issue of the demolition request, 70 Farmer Street? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion of second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. 460 North Highway 29. This is a public hearing on this demolition request.
Yes, sir. They actually, there's two of these. So this is the first one. This is an old residential structure that will not become part of their development here. We should have somebody here for this one.
Could you do me a favor and speak into the mic a little bit, a little closer to the mic?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, if you'll state your name for the record.
Travis Robinson, Miller Commercial Properties.
Thank you. Council, have any questions, gentlemen? All right, is there anyone else here that would like to speak to the issue of the demolition request at 460 North Highway 29? We'll close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion on this. So moved. Second, motion of second, we grant the request. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. 474 North Highway 29 is adjacent to that property.
That's correct, sir.
This is a public hearing on this issue.
This is an old commercial building, part of the same redevelopment. I'm going to utilize this building out of it.
Anyone here would like to come forward to speak to the demolition request of 474 North Highway 29? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion on this.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second on to grant the request for demolition of the structure of 474 North Highway 29. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. Thank you for being here this evening, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a consideration for a request to extend the lease at 23 Clark Street. You have this request before you. I think there are two gentlemen here who could answer any questions if we have any. Mr. Hancock.
Good evening. I'm Robert Hancock, and I've lived in Newnan for 40 years old, 40 years, which makes me something of a newcomer, and I understand that. But I've been associated with the Artisan Residence Program since the beginning and continue to be, and I'm very proud of my association with it and what it's accomplished. We've only been operating for nine years. The lease was signed 10 years ago, but it took us a year to rehab the building, and we spent significant funds on the building. We put new siding, new roof, new windows, new doors, refinished the floors. It was a completely different building before we took it. And we're very pleased. We've had an average of nine artists a year in the years we've been in, and that doesn't really count the two years of the pandemic where we had not very many. So I know that one of you was quoted in the Newnan paper as saying that you'd been told the facility was underutilized, and I just think that was bad information. We, like I said, we've had an average of nine per year. In the last year, we had a Pulitzer Prize winning poet. Last month, we had a painter whose work has been on the cover of Time Magazine and a U.S. postage stamp. And all of these people are required as part of our program to do some public interaction. So they speak at the Carnegie or do demonstrations at the Carnegie, or they speak at West Georgia, and many of them go into the public schools here. This, one of our artists put us on the front page of the New York Times. And whether you liked the work or not, it's notable and should be respected. Has anybody seen this or not seen it? I'll be glad to pass it around. But we respectfully, very respectfully, like to ask for another 10-year renewal on this lease, and we'll keep the building in good shape and use it for good purposes and continue for the public interaction.
We appreciate your help and the presence of Art Reds in our community. You've done a great job. Any questions of Mr. Hancock?
Just for, Mr., real fast, a couple, just so everybody understands. Who paid for all those repairs and kept the building out?
We did from private sources.
Okay, so fundraising and stuff like that?
Yes.
All right.
It was primarily two beneficial trusts here in the community. But the city has been a great partner with this, and they went above and beyond in making some structural repairs about a year ago. But otherwise, just for example, we spent $10,000 in the last year dealing with a minor mold problem. And we intend to keep this a benefit to the city and not a burden.
Absolutely, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, no other questions or comments, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the extension, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the extension. It's 10-year extension on the lease. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you for being here, Mr. Hancock, appreciate it very much. The next item is a consideration of MEAG power purchase and reserve and supplemental capacity from City of Marietta. We've done this, done these countless numbers of times. You're very familiar with this. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, we approve the request for the MEAG power purchase and reserve supplemental capacity from City of Marietta to Newnan. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. The next is a very popular item, a consideration of the holiday pay resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, and everybody's second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. The next, Ms. Kelsey, is a consideration of a resolution to purchase a first responder PTSD coverage.
Good evening, Mayor Council. As we discussed our budget during our recent retreat, we talked about the Ashley Wilson Act and our need to allocate funds to provide PTSD coverage for our first responders. This law was just enacted in '24, and this coverage must be in effect by January the 1st of 2025. We sent our census off. GMA will be offering this coverage, and the amount of that cost is $24,953. That covers both our disability coverage and a lump sum diagnosis benefit that we have to provide. So staff would recommend binding that coverage. It is in next year's budget. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
I make a motion, we approve.
I was just thinking about this, was.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second.
Questions, is this something we could do like with our health insurance and bring this in-house at some point? Or is this something much larger than that?
Well, this is a new program that's being offered. GMA right now is the only provider that I know that's offering the program. So it's similar to the firefighters' cancer policy that we provide. It's also done through the GMA program. It may be something in the future that we can look at, but there are particular coverages that we have to provide for this benefit, so.
Okay, now just asking the question.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion, second, to approve the request. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a resolution for the 2025 city council meeting schedule. We all have that before you, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion of second, we approve the resolution setting the 2025 city council meeting schedule. Any discussion?
I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
November 11th meeting, that is Veterans Day. And then the other one that I thought about was November 25th. That's two days before Thanksgiving. Most of, you know, it's two days prior to, but I'd hate for missing anybody because of travel or anything like that.
Here we are, two days.
I know, we're doing it again.
They just hit when they hit.
They do, yep. And just like Memorial Day is on May 26th, the day before the May 27th meeting. So anyway, just proof of the fact.
Okay. Anyone else? I have a motion, second, to approve, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. Then next is a consideration of contract award for HVAC replacement at Wesley Street Boys and Girls Club. Mr. Johnson, how are you this evening?
Doing well, sir. How's everyone tonight?
Good.
Mr. Mayor, just here on behalf of the city to answer any questions on a consideration before you.
You have the contract before you, the proposal before you, are there any questions? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, we grant the.
Thank you.
The contract award as presented by staff of the Boys and Girls Club on Wesley Street. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. Thank you, sir. The next is a consideration for a resolution to support a downtown development revolving fund award. You've been here before with these in the Downtown Development Authority area. If there are any questions, Strickland is here to be able to answer anything you have. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion, second, we approve as presented the resolution to support a downtown development revolving fund loan award. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. The next item is a bit different than what we usually do, consideration of a resolution to support an amicus brief change versus City of Milton. So if any questions about this arise, Mr. Sears is here this evening, can clear up anything, what we're doing here? Anyone?
Yeah. Help me understand what this is actually doing, what we are doing.
Mr. Sears?
Fine, I'm sorry.
Amicus brief. Amicus brief. Why?
Oh, this was a case that you may have seen in the news where a vehicle, I think it was a young man who had been partying that night, and he was driving around the curb in the City of Milton, and struck a planner, like in a subdivision planner, and was killed. And the judge allowed the case to go to a jury, and they awarded $35 million.
$35 million verdict.
The judge would not let the city out under sovereign immunity, even though the planner was not located within the right of way. So I think that the status of the case is on appeal in Court of Appeals.
Initially denied, first appeal denied.
Well, the Court of Appeals initially denied it, so this is either an amicus brief to the full in-bank Court of Appeals or as part of the social order to the Supreme Court. It's a very disconcerting case. Now, we've always been concerned, but we've had some coverage for certain things in the right of way that if a court were to find us liable for such a street sale of our own city monuments, and that sort of thing. Most discouraging thing here is that this was on private property, so not like county stuff or even some in the city where you have the brick mailboxes in the right of way. This was completely off the right of way. The court ruled that the city had knowledge that it was a hazard, even though that was not proven in the unblown case. So we would recommend ending this brief, because it's going to cause you insurance policy to go sky high. And plus, I think the insurance company wouldn't, probably wouldn't cover it simply because it was outside of the right of way. So if you had to pay $35 million, that would be a huge number in the million rate increase to be able to get that money to pay that bill. So we do recommend approval of the resolution.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve resolution.
Second. Motion of second to approve as presented or to adopt the resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. The next, I believe, Mr. Craver, consideration of a resolution to adopt a moratorium on the acceptance of occupational tax certificates, site plan, grading plans, building plans, building disturbance plans, grading permits, feriens, special exception, use permit in certain zones on certain uses.
Yes, sir. Mayor Brady, members of the council, this is a result of some, the discussion that occurred at your October 21st retreat. Very specifically, what's in front of you is the consideration to adopt this moratorium to put on hold the issuance of licenses under what the mayor just read for vape shop establishments, car dealerships, and extended stay hotels to allow for staff, the planning commission, to consider adding location restrictions and various other additional regulations, such as distance between those establishments. We can answer questions as you may have them.
Council, have any questions regarding this resolution? I think we've been through a discussion in retreat with this already. If there are any questions of, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Motion of second, we adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you, Mr. Craver. Next, Mr. Moody, is a request for the authorization to sell 100 East Washington Street lot, remittance of proceeds to the City of Newnan, cancellation of note and security deed, and forgiveness of unrealized balance.
Yes, thank you, council. And Gerald Walton, the chairman of the Nura Board, is here to present the item to you.
Mr. Walton, how are you?
How you doing?
Good.
Gerald Walton, chairman of the Nura Board. The council awarded the Nura Board $150,000 for rehabilitation of 100 East Washington Street. When we got started on it, we had a contractor to start rehabilitation. It was unfeasible, we had structural problems. So we just decided to ask you, could we tear it down? We did. We only used $64,055 of the 150, and it left us with available balance of $84,945. So what we are asking the council's approval is to sell 100 East Washington Street, and we're going to have a sequestering competitive seal be, sequestered, excuse me, competitive seal proposal. And upon that sale, basically, we want to give the proceeds back to the City of Newnan.
All right.
And once we do that, we are asking that the city cancel the note and security deed attached to the lot as well as forgiveness for the money that we didn't use, the $84,945.
Correct.
Okay? And with that money, we want to use it, we want to use the unrealized balance for expenses such as, you know, not limited legal fees, construction, lease purchase units, training events, buy annual paint days, housing fare related expenses. That's what the board voted on to do, but we are taking recommendations from the council on what you think that we should do.
Well, I personally like your proposal. Rest of the council can speak for themselves.
I do, I have a, I have a hard time letting go of the property. I mean, land is the hardest thing that you have to deal with when trying to provide affordable housing, which is your mission. So, and I know that because I do it every day with Habitat. So for me, it is, you know, we, I think that a solution that allows you to keep that property and still build on it is where I would like to see us move forward with this. You know, we're asked, you're already asking for some sort of forgiveness of the loan amount anyway. So I say let's forgive the loan entirely and let you, and deal with the security deed issue so that you can use the funding that you have available to build a house on that. If I'm not mistaken, we had $4.6 million from congressionally directed spending. We had 10 lots, we were allowed to build up to 16 houses with that money. So I'm like, why give away a lot when we have more money there available to actually build a home on if the security deed is released from it? Because from what I understand, you can't pay debt service with federal funds. So we are in control of whether there's debt on there. It's not like it's an outside source. And then we can add to our affordable homeownership program that successfully kicked off on Murray Street beautifully. And I'd like to see more of that done on this lot instead of put it out to the market. Because once you get rid of that lot, you're back to square one of not having enough lots to build affordable housing on. And we've been there before, gentlemen, where we've gotten rid of other pieces of property, and now we're looking at the workforce not having enough homeownership opportunities. When we have a pride, we got gold by having a lot right here.
Yes, we actually have been here before, and I think the question was asked, how many lots do we have available? And there was a surplus of many years of lots that were available. If I'm not mistaken, that was the answer to the question. I don't remember the exact number.
I can't remember the exact year in which that booklet was prepared. There was a surplus of lots at some point in time, but we, as far as the Nura Board goes in determining properties, a lot of the lots that were available, and specifically in the chalk level area, for that CDS grant are not buildable. So there are some complications that come along with that. Hence why we've gotten down to the 10 lots. So the 11th lot, yes, would be of some benefit, but ultimately, whatever the council recommends is how we'll move.
I have a question. Is this lot buildable, that's within the zoning and all, everything?
This lot is one of the largest lots available in the area.
It's the best lot you got.
Yes, is it in the district? Okay.
It is, and yes, that is not actually within the chalk level district as I am aware. I believe it is within the historic Mill Village possibly.
Yeah, it's not in.
So it's, we would, if, for the HUD grant, we would have to ask for some additional leverage on moving outside of the district too. So that does pose this like issue, but it's not, it's not an issue that's unresolvable. It's one that can be easily overtaken.
So it wouldn't add to the 10, it wouldn't alleviate the 10 problem?
It could with additional effort.
Yeah.
So I have a question. How many buildable lots do you have in your bank?
We've identified 10.
10?
So far.
That's it? Because I recall a conversation where I thought we had more than that, and I could be, I could be wrong.
I'll clarify on that, 10 in chalk level.
Okay, I'm talking about, I'm talking about total, because we're.
We have not gone into enough depth to determine what the buildable lot amount would be in the other districts.
So it'd be safe to say that you have way more than 10 available?
It is safe to say that there are buildable lots available in Rocky Hill and Westgate.
Well, this is in not any of those three.
No, that's correct. None of the grants we currently have operating are allowable in any of those. However, we could ask HUD to provide some, alleviate that by just allowing for, I guess, a variance of sorts to go into other districts.
And you know that process exists?
Yes, I can confirm that that process exists.
Okay.
Would you, I know you don't know this, but would you think that whoever bought the lot would actually build a residence on it?
That is up to the council as well. If you wanted to attach restrictions to it, you could attach a restriction to it.
So I guess I'm getting at, I don't think we would necessarily lose a lot for a residence. It might just not be Nura building the residence, but someone else could be building a residence there.
Correct. If Nura is not building the residence, it would be a market rate home.
There you go, right, that's what I was getting at. So we're not losing residences by this, by what we're doing, okay.
But the market has many more options than the workforce housing does. And so we would be losing a potential workforce housing unit that probably wouldn't be able to happen anywhere else due to market factors.
Okay, so let me make sure that I've got some clarity, everybody's got some clarity here. What's the pressure point that brought this back to us?
So as far as Tracy and myself were made aware is that, finally, we do need to get this off the books, is that the loan is due at this point. So it needs, the 150 is not payable, considering that we cannot pay back with any grant funding, and that's 90% of what Nura operates on, and that's where that $84,000 left out of the original loan comes from. So that's where that original ask of forgiveness of the unrealized balance would come from.
From this body.
That's right.
Correct.
So what's the pressure point?
The loan.
I understand that, it's a loan to us.
That's right.
So the other way to do this is just to come to us and, as Ms. Jenkins said, and just ask for forgiveness and keep the lot.
Correct. Because even if we were to, at some point in time, use grant funding to build a structure on that lot, the loan still can never be paid back, because we're operating off a program income earned on a grant.
Correct.
So a motion, so in theory, so a motion to forgive the loan, is that appropriate? And then just, then we're done?
Well, it's not on our agenda, but I would think if we didn't want to take that action without it being on an agenda, we could certainly say, put this item in our next agenda next month and take the, take the action of, that you're suggesting, and Ms. Jenkins is suggesting. to just forgive the loan, so it is an agenda item publicly noticed, and we move forward in that.
And then Nura retains the ownership of the lot for future use.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
I would like to see that happen.
Okay.
Could I ask you a question? Kind of, I'm not trying to be late to the game, y'all deal with this, but to me, it makes sense. We have numerous lots, and I think this was the original intent, was we have numerous lots that are just waiting to be built on, numerous, not just the 10 that we were talking about previously. But if this is a buildable lot, and we have the loan, you know, again, to ourselves. But the point is, to clear up the books, to, to me, it makes sense, let's go ahead and cancel the loan, but put it out to bid, and again, recoup some of the costs because we already have so many excess lots available. That's what, I mean, that just makes sense to me, because at this point, if you look at the build out for all those lots, we're looking years down the road.
Ultimately, that would be the goal. We'll use the CDS grant as an example. At some point in time, we're going to have to ask HUD for that, to alleviate that boundary request anyway, because we will exhaust the number of lots that are available to build on in chalk level, and we can, we're going to have program income to continue to build on lots. So we're going to need, we're going to need more at some point in time, and we may, who knows? This program is continuously revolving until it exhausts itself, so it could go on for numbers of years and completely exhaust what we consider a...
I'm saying citywide. I'm not looking just chalk level. I'm only saying, citywide, we've got a lot of lots.
There are, and we will have to ask HUD for, to let us expand that boundary to work in the other districts, because right now, it's only chalk level center.
Okay.
So, one question, please. If I recall correctly, to Councilman Cricko's, what he just mentioned regarding having a lot of lots, you had specifically said that would take a number of years to build on those... Now, when you say a number of years, quantify those years. Are you talking 10 years? Are you talking 20 years to build, to build out the lots that are buildable?
So the buildable lots in chalk level, we have a seven-year timeframe that we have to have these constructed.
Okay, let's go beyond chalk level. Let's talk about all the other lots that are in reserve that you have an opportunity to build on, correct?
Yes.
All right, so how many of those lots do you have? And how long would it take for those lots to be built out? In other words, you have, if I'm hearing you correctly, you have a number of lots that you can actively build on at this particular time, and I believe our last conversation, I believe you had mentioned, you have the capability of possibly two to three to maybe four per year. Was that...
That is, that is safe to assume, and that's what we'd ideally do. It's two to three per year. So assuming that there are, there's the possibility of acquisitions as well, we're probably looking at at least 10 years, if not longer than 10 years, to get all the lots built.
So you can have affordable housing in all those additional lots, correct?
Of course.
All right. So I would probably, I'm for putting the lot back on the market, to the open market, that particular piece of property. I think it's a substantial piece of property. I think it'd be, I'd like to see the free market have an opportunity at that particular, that piece myself. That's where I am.
Okay.
I've got one more comment. You know, in these situations, the, he says it'll take years because they're doing two or three right now per year. With the funding that you have, I mean, you just built three not too long ago.
And getting ready to build three more.
As a matter of fact, you've got, what, four more coming out?
We have three more that are under contract, and the contractor's pulling permits up this, should be this week.
So you're just getting warmed up. You could very well do more.
No, that's not part of the 10. That's the ARCA program.
Right, that's the ARCA program.
That's right.
So you have the capability, since you're hiring this out to contractors, to actually do far more per year than you currently are doing. So, say in 10 years now, based on three a year, is really not where you're headed. Where you're headed is to do many more than that, which means you could run out far sooner than you're talking. And the land banking piece of it is essential to affordable housing, because I've learned nothing in the, gosh, 1998 is when I started doing this? Land banking is the key to being able to have affordable housing into the future. Land banking, that's it. I mean, it has to be, because once it's gone, it's gone. And so leaving one lot now to the market is just one less lot they'll have into the future to do what they need to do, to provide workforce housing, needed workforce housing in our community.
Okay, so I'd like, to Counsel's pleasure, a motion to put this item on our next agenda for consideration with the option of asking for forgiveness for the total loan amount as a separate agenda item, and as a third separate agenda item, asking our permission for you to move forward with an application to HUD to increase the boundaries that the award of money that we have will give you. Let's clear all those things up at our next meeting.
Sure.
Does that need to be, so moved?
Can I ask you a question?
So moved?
Is there a second? Motion is second, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. All right, so we are deciding now whether we're not going to sell it?
We're deciding, we're not deciding anything. We're punting.
I mean, I'm talking about next meeting.
Well, the Council...
Is that separate from the forgiveness of the loan?
You'll have to do one or the other next meeting. But I, I won't all, there's enough discussion here, I'd have all, give all of us enough time to consider both options and the HUD expansion. Okay, so a motion is second. Anything else? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. We appreciate you being here and your hard work. Under unfinished business, second final reading, consideration of an ordinance to amend the charter of the City of Noonan, amending Article II, City Government, Section 2.12B, Ordinance Form, Procedure and Provide for Adoption of Ordinances, and Upon Introduction. This is the second final reading. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve on second.
I'd like to make a comment.
Motion is second. We approve on second final reading. Comment?
This is the last time we'll do this.
Well, no.
It's not.
I don't think it will be.
Okay.
I will call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign.
Aye.
Okay, this was a 5-2 pass. The next item is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Noonan by amending Section 3-32, Introduction, Interact, Enactment of Ordinances of Article II, City Council of Charter II, so as to provide for an adoption of ordinances upon introduction. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign.
Aye.
5-2. Will you place this item on our agenda for a second and final reading? By irony of it all. Okay, the next item is a consideration of amendments to the current facility use and fee schedule.
Yes, sir. Mayor Brady, members of the Council, as I'm talking, I'm going to ask Mr. Brent Snodgrass to join me up here, in case you have any particular questions. At the October 21st, 2024 Council Retreat, this item was brought for consideration. The staff made a recommendation at the time. The Council had asked for additional information. That information is included in your packet. Very specifically talks about the standing use agreements currently under contract with the City of Noonan and their performance. What you have here above you is kind of a graphic, if you will, or illustrative display of the same information shown in your packet. Mr. Snodgrass and I can entertain any questions you may have. Our recommendation from staff is to remove those current standing use agreements, open all facilities to rentals starting in 2025, adopting a new fee schedule for those facilities, continue to allow users to rent facilities on a first-come, first-served basis, no more than four times per month, and then adopt a hardship exemption. So there may be certain groups, users, individuals who come to the community and have certain hardships, and that the staff would like the Council to consider a hardship exemption so that we could provide those facilities to those certain individuals and groups. What's shown above you is a month-by-month, starting about three and a half months ago. So we have August in front of you. The next is, of course, September, and then we go into this past week, I believe. What I want to draw your attention to, if you don't mind stopping there, please, are the red squares. So the red essentially shows those times in which certain standing use agreements did not show up, nor did they call to notify staff that they did not show up. Yes, sir, there's lots of red on there. But there are, look, so I want to divorce two items when we're here, right? The staff is not picking on any one individual or group. What we believe is there's the policy that was originally adopted by this body in 2018 and ratified again in 2021 to get individuals into these facilities. We do not believe that it's working in its current form. We believe because, because of the policy, the way it stands today, there is less incentive for certain groups to honor the agreements that this body and we as the citizens have granted to them. And so you pay nothing, you don't have, you have a standing agreement, you keep that day, excuse me, that day or days each week, you use it at your pleasure, and what's evidenced here is some folks don't use it, don't show up, don't call. And those facilities, those dates and those times could be used by other groups. And so that's where the recommendation comes from, and Mr. Snodgrass and I can answer any questions you may have.
Is that in our packet?
Yes, but it's narrative. It's written out in a narrative. This is just a visual representation of the same thing that's included in your packet. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, why isn't that in our packet? Because I mean, you're using it right here, and this is the first time I've seen it.
To show visual representation. It's no different than the information that's included in your packet, beginning on the second page, starting with the majestic pearls that are underlined.
I get that, but there's, it's not like y'all created it yesterday. I would love to have seen this so I can read it, because I can't read it. I see just squares, so I can't see what you're talking about. So I got a few questions. And it's not a surprise as to where I am on this. We talked about it in the, in the retreat. I believe that there is great value to keeping our standing agreements with our users, particularly those who are serving, one, lots of children, and two, lots of children who don't have access to other programs, and who are serving them where they live. So, I mean, nobody's surprised. I actually worked with the Cobra Foundation many years ago, coached for six, seven seasons, maybe, and saw hundreds of kids come through that program, and many of them actually ended up being members of the Noonan Youth Council later on, after they aged out of this program. And good kids who needed what the Cobra Foundation offered to them, and continue to offer to the kids in their community. And they have nowhere else to play other than this, these city facilities, which frankly, they helped to galvanize the community to get. And so I understand that you have a problem with some who don't come. As a matter of fact, it even talks about people being late on here, which I'm like, really? They show up at 6:05, 6:15. Does that really impact the program? So I would like to see us evaluate the programs based on the need that they are providing to the community, the number of children that they actually serve, not just showing up that day and saying, hey, there's only eight cheerleaders in the room, when there are 300 kids in the program. Because I think that's misleading, when it's one squad at a time that may show up, or out of season and say, hey, there's four kids showing up for this particular day, when it's just not football season. I mean, those are the things that I think are misleading about the information that we have and incomplete. I am absolutely in favor of continuing to support organizations that are supporting a need in our community. And not only are the parents who are here supportive of this program, you see, these kids haven't given us a bit of trouble sitting here in this auditorium. So I'm, I'm passionate about it because this is something that has proven to make a difference in our community, and I can speak from it, from a passionate individual who's not talking bad about them, but showed up when they needed somebody. And we should, too.
Okay, other comments? Okay, we don't do that here. Sorry I didn't say that at the beginning of the meeting, but we don't do that here. For or against? Sit quietly, listen. If you'd like to speak, I've got a signing sheet here. DeAndre Franklin signed yes that he'd like to speak, so I'd like to ask him to come forward.
So you're going to allow for more comments, more comments?
Oh, sure, we're going to come back to us.
All right.
But again, no outburst. Thank you. And gentlemen in the group, if you'll take your hats off, but we appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Good evening, Counsel. How y'all doing today?
Good, how are you?
All right, so many of you all know me, when I started this program back in 2006. I started this program when we first moved to Calhwydy County from Conyers. And as I rode around the City of Noonan, I saw tons of kids with nothing to do in the Chalkville-West Noonan area, absolutely been abandoned by the community. And so what we decided to do was give them something that is a sport, to bring those kids in, to motivate them, but we're not a football program. We are a mentor program. These coaches that you see before him, many don't even have kids, all the team will go to these kids' school when the teachers call them as their first response when the kids are acting up, the teachers. The police officers call us when there's something that's going on. So you all know the history of this program, so I don't have to stand here and really have to constantly keep defending this program, because to be honest, I'm shaking over here right now when I see some of this stuff. And I'm shaking because there were a lot of promises made to us that were not kept by some of the leaders on this very panel right now, and I don't want to make it negative, but I do want to speak the truth and get it on record. See, in 2006, when we started, everything was, you know, moving forward, and people didn't want us here. Then we moved forward, and I think it was 2000, we had a great partnership with the city, to be honest. We adopted the street with Do to Keep Beautiful. My wife was on the Par's Commission. My daughter was part of Do to Youth Council. I served on one of the commissions. I can't even remember. But we served kids. We've done thousands of kids to keep them out of the streets. Ricky Sturrock, Rodney Sturrock, this young man come back to coach. He played. Various others. Coach, you got a kid in here? You got a kid, Coach? Joe, come here. Come back to coach. Chris, these are all kids that play with us now, instead of being in the streets doing something crazy, they're now giving back to their community. Riding around, picking up some of these kids that weren't misbehaving in school because they don't want them to go down that path. But I also want to share some of the things that we've done that people tend to miss and lie on us about. So the first thing that we've done, we've partnered with you guys on Easter egg hunts. We've done that, and Cynthia's already mentioned that we do the Do to Youth Council. We've done that. We started our own summer food program where we feed these kids during the summer when they don't eat. And we do all this with very little support, because we was doing this outside at CEC because nobody would give us a place. And in 2016, do you know, part of the SPAS funds that was used for the Howard Warner Building was because we wrote the funding and the proposal? So we talk about the proposals not working and so forth, so I pulled the proposal up. And everything in this proposal that we said we would do, Doggo, we've done it. And remember the first year in 2017 when we started it? 2018, we had to fight with the YMCA Summit because we needed to share with them, because they had overcrowded their facility, so you pushed us out, so we had to do less for the kids that you see right here. Because we was pushed out because the summit needed more space for kids, and it pushed these kids, this is their very community, out. Then with the skate, so we, everybody know we do CJ Smith. So we at CJ Smith, this is no secret, when CJ Smith was out there and they were talking about doing the skate park versus doing the multiple fields, we had a massive group come out that day. It opposed to the skate park, opposed to it, because that's what we practicing. Every day, we practicing kept them kids out of the street. Guess what? A member approached me and said, hey, if you allow this to happen, Picket Field could be yours. We're going to do a whole stadium over at Picket Field. Fast forward, we were all excited when they said Picket Field. We were out there practicing at Picket Field, excited because we got a place with lights, they're going to give us a restroom, and we're going to have a turf field. Then it came time to put the lines on the Doggo thing. Oh, no, we're not going to do that. Oh, no, we're not going to do that. No, we're not going to put the lines on it anymore. We're done. You guys have to fend for yourself. You owe your own the kids. Okay, fine. Well, guess what we did? We kept making it. But one thing I can tell you all that I am sick and tired of, as a citizen of this great state, of this great city, I'm sick and tired of these kids being treated like roaches. Tired of it. I cannot express how tired I am that these kids get treated like roaches. Everybody sweeps us under the rug, try to push us away as if we are unwanted people. We are your citizens. Please understand that. Please understand that we are your citizens and we want to continue our partnership. We do an annual spelling bee every year. And this year, we didn't do our spelling bee. I had it on the books. But somehow, eventually, you know, when it came time to do the spelling bee, it was removed. We did, we brought about 600 kids from all over Atlanta to compete in the annual spelling bee at the Water Off Drill Auditorium. It did happen this year, but that's okay, because another city did what you wouldn't do. See, I get tired of, see, I also sit on the board for Atlanta, I mean, for the whole state of Georgia. We've taken these kids to Florida, we've taken these kids to national championships. These kids love exit 47. Every last one of them read exit 47. Where exit is that? That's this city. Now, how many people come down here to this city? This city right here from Atlanta that we just, like, man, I thought this was too far. And now they live here? Because we have given them exposure, and excuse my passion, because I'm not angry. I'm very passionate about what I do with these kids. And if you ever came across me, you know that. I don't want to have to keep fighting and fighting for these kids when they're your kids too. These are your kids too. When a pickleball time, throw a pickleball, you don't have no problem throwing up a pickleball. When it's time to do softball, we got more softball fields than we need. We don't have a multipurpose field. We got over 30 soccer fields. We don't need that. We need somewhere for these kids to play. You've already displaced us in our own neighborhood. When the tornado came through Noonan, it was this group, these young men, organizing and going in and cutting down trees in the chalk level and pulling people out of their houses during the tornado. And then for two weeks, we fed the entire chalk level community, provided them water, and we did that as an organized group. You know where most of everybody else was at? Our own person in the district didn't even come over there. Red Cross came to us, they said, man, you guys have organized so well, we want to partner with you guys. And that's what we did. So I am tired of being treated like a second-class person. And I will not tolerate it anymore. That's why I retired, so I can be all up in here and all up in the grits. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions from staff on this? I mean, from the council?
I have some, I have some questions. Thank you, staff, for doing such a great job and getting us feedback regarding the information and the, there's some phrasing in here, so I want, I need some clarity. So when somebody shows up late or doesn't show up at all, how does that affect staff?
So our, excuse me, so our staff show up to unlock the buildings, so our gymnasiums, so they show up there. They usually wait 15 minutes, there's a 15-minute grace period. And if they don't hear anything, they move on to their next task.
Okay, so when it says in here that they're late, it's beyond 15 minutes? It's not five minutes, it's not that?
That, that's correct.
Okay, correct? Now, one of the things that I noticed throughout here was that there's a couple organizations that are not going to renew or want to be renewed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then now we have down to, my next point here. So it's without notice that they don't give you any allotted time? And then also, as the subletting was a kind of concern, I see they sublet to another group. Is that tolerated within the lease?
No, sir. It should not be.
So what is the explanation when they're subletting? It appears to me that you're not even notified when they're subletting, is that correct?
Yeah, we've been able to, as we're, under Mr. Snodgrass's leadership, we've been able to curb a lot of that.
Yeah.
But it still occurs from time to time.
Okay. So going through all this, each group has a estimated number of people that they, number of students that they work with? And, and that, you really have no way of verifying that, just, it's unverifiable, right? You don't use the word, language verifiable, you just say it's.
And so how that works is each one of the standing use agreement holders has an annual contract and they tell staff how many members they anticipate working with during that calendar year. They hand us, they give us that information. And then, under Mr. Snodgrass's leadership, we've gotten in, we've started visiting these people more frequently. And so some of what you have written down in front of you talks about what we've witnessed, what we've seen in this. And then some also self-report. Some have said, we thought we would serve 40, but we're serving eight, as a for instance. Others do, you know, serve the number they say they're going to serve. And so that's the information that.
So with all that information, I guess, I'll ask both of you, our staff, is, based upon our discussion at council, that you have stated it's not working in your opinion? Because you're going down, remove the standing agreements and open the facilities to others who have students, children that they would want to work with?
Including those that are here on the standing use agreement holders, you know, they would come back on a, they could use it up to four times per month. Pay the fee that we've suggested in the fee schedule, but yes, so remove these agreements that currently exist where these groups and individuals pay no fee and have the allotted time regardless of impact, et cetera. They have these agreements, so the recommendation is remove those. They can come back in and rent the facilities up to four times per month.
So it's safe to say that you're not limiting them to renting it and for them to continue to do what they want to do?
Correct.
They just, this, your recommendation to us is, so basically that more citizens can use it throughout the city?
Yeah, more groups, more other individuals can be in it.
You know, you're going to save time for them. You absolutely are for some groups. Limiting it to four times a month is absolutely cutting it off.
Well, that would be your opinion, but based upon, that's staff's, staff's opinion here is to adopt a fee schedule, remove the standing agreement, so I'd have to ask them, why would they even recommend that if it's not? That would be my question.
If you have three days a week in the gym, that's three times more than what they're, so you are reducing.
So, so, the question would remain, I applaud them for all, for everyone for all that they do, and I can see the passion, it's good. My question would be for the other people who, because of these standing agreements, aren't able to use the public facilities. What do you say, what do you say to those people? That would be my question.
There are hours that the facilities are not covered by these groups and some of them, as we saw, are not going to renew their lease agreements. And then I'm not saying to hold them for all the groups that have had them. What I asked in the very beginning was to evaluate based on those who serve a large number of children and who are serving those who have no other options in our community because of socioeconomic situations. And so that in itself is a limiter, but focuses on who we really need to be serving with these facilities that are right in their community. You can't run a program with one day a week for a couple of hours when you're serving hundreds of children. Because they can't all fit in that gym at the same time to do all the things that they need to do. That's why they need the times that they've asked for.
But it would be fair to say that there is a, adapt a hardship exemption? If there's a hardship, I mean, that's in here on number four, is that, would that be considered an exemption?
What is a hardship then?
Well.
We believe that there's, you know, an opportunity for a renter to show that they're serving a certain number of youth that may be eligible for free to reduce lunch, or their family is receiving TANF supplement, and they could get up to a 50% reduction in their fee.
But not more time?
No, ma'am.
See, and that's the problem. That's the problem.
And I, I have to say, I agree with you there. I, and I, but the fees are something separate than what we're talking about, which is usage. And I know they're tied together, but there are groups, and the Cobra's an example of that, that serve a larger number of people than some of the smaller groups. So how do you, if it's a security deposit or an hourly rate of just one time or two times a week, how do you, how does that group serve all the people they have?
So I, I think what's not listed in here too is, we didn't start keeping track of this until late August. You know, I came on mid-July, so we didn't really start getting deep into tracking this information until I got kind of my feet under me. Some things that I found out is, just over the summertime, we've had, we had one group that just didn't show up the entire summer. Nobody was notified. I found out about this because I was like, where have they been? And then finally, my staff told me. So that was one. You know, I think some of these programs are seasonal, whether it's basketball. Maybe, maybe that's looked at differently seasonally, but, you know, during the summertime, it's, it's not utilized for much outside of the, you know, I'm just using Howard Warner Gymnasium as an example, but, you know, outside of the cheerleading program that's hosted by Cobra, and I think, let's see, we've got the Noonan Bruins who have decided not to continue, and Elite Youth, just based on their attendance, they're, you know, it's kind of, as you see, they've got a number of red marks there, just in, they're number five down on that list. So, you know, we're just seeing sporadic use of the facility, so we're suggesting, well, if they're using it sporadically, maybe we just reduce that time down. And then that then offers up other times for other users or other groups to come into that facility.
So.
Go ahead. No, go ahead. And, did you have something?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jim.
Is there a way to add to the hardship additional days as a review? Like addition, you know?
Sure, yeah, it's a pleasure to assist council.
Reduction of fee and?
Sure.
Or additional days?
That's what the council did, I think, kind of in part by creating the standing use agreement.
You can use your monitoring of it, all the data coming in for that particular situation to warrant additional days.
Yeah.
It sounds like, if I may, that, I appreciate you coming and bringing this crowd, and that's impressive. And y'all have, it seems like, consistently been there. You've used your standing use agreement very well. Whereas some of these groups have abused the privilege of using facilities because they know it's available, but then just showed up, just didn't show up. And maybe something is having a standing use agreement for those that consistently use it, I don't know. And maybe if you miss so many days, then your agreement is canceled. I don't know if we could do that, and just be like, hey, let's open it up. But then that would open up more spots for those on a first-come, first-served basis and just have a few select spots available to those that actually use the, use the facilities appropriately without abusing it.
Sure.
So.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'd be act enough, go ahead. I got a couple more questions, but go ahead.
I've got a suggestion, so you go with your questions.
Make your suggestion and maybe.
No, no, my suggestion tries to give closure. You go ahead.
Okay, so you had mentioned that you just started keeping records since August of this from the summer. And would it be safe to say, I don't like to assume, but it's safe to say that it just didn't start in August?
It's safe to assume that this was going on before August.
So part of my concern, and again, I applaud everyone for their efforts and their passion. Part of my concern is because of the non-calling and the inconvenience to staff and the things that, really, it's kind of like taking, not saying anybody here does that, but taking for granted what is available to them and not really seeing the value, the value that it brings. So I, what concerns me a bit is that we don't want to take, should take into account those who are unable to use it because of the timeframes that are available and locked in, so to speak. Because I would venture to say, as staff has indicated in our retreat, that you all feel, and from your experience and your exhaustive research that you've done, that there are numerous other groups that you could see would fill those timeframes that don't have an opportunity to do that timeframe. Would that be correct?
That's correct. I mean, we've, we receive phone calls weekly, I mean, specifically with Picket Field, but also with some of our gymnasiums, other groups that, you know, and it was mentioned earlier, YMCA spelling over. You know, some of our groups, we get contacted regularly about that. I think if we opened up more time and we had the opportunity to offer that to the public, I think they would start trying to reserve the facilities. You know, when you look on our booking platform, Civic Rec, it actually shows what time slots are available to rent. Right now, if you look at that calendar for the next few months, and I think it was in your packet, you can kind of see how those evenings are blocked out during the week. And then on some, on the weekends a little bit as well. So it, it kind of looks like, oh, I can't get into that facility. So that's, yeah.
Well, and that's, if you got, that's my suggestion here, is that we try to bring some closure to the issue today, but not in a definitive way, if that makes sense. Because what I'd like to do is see three of us, you sound like you're passionate about this.
I am, yes, yes.
So Mr. Geon, myself, and Ms. Jenkins, I will appoint, and I don't normally do this, I will appoint the three of us as a committee to sit with staff, to sort through what we've got here and bring it back to the rest of the group. Because I'm, I just, I'm just be honest with you, I'm confused. And I want to make sure that those organizations that are out there who are serving large groups of children in our community have the opportunity to use these facilities. But I also want to make sure that the rest of our community has the opportunity to go on your website and find slots where they've got, I mean, Cobra started somewhere and there may be another group out there that won't say start and can't get it because they can't find a slot, or two slots, or three slots. So I need an education here. And I don't think I can get it just here in this. So I want to, I want to involve not only staff, but some of our participants in the community who use our facilities. And we may be back to you next month, we may not be back to you till January because of the holidays. Mr. Shale.
Are you talking about foregoing the fee schedule or just the use schedule?
I want to, I think they're both intertwined, but they're separate discussions.
Yeah, because I just, part of it on the fee schedule, there's a lot of things besides those buildings, I think the cemetery.
That's right.
I think some of that needs to get approved before the first of the year. And I don't know how we separate all of that, but I think a lot of the things that we're not discussing tonight need to be, go ahead and approve, whether it's fee schedules.
Mr. Shale, that's actually the next item for discussion. That's actually our next item, yes, sir. We did remove facilities from that consideration tonight.
So, may I add one other thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I think it would be very helpful with, for us to know who is, who rents it seasonally? If you can break it down into seasons, so football is not all year round, or some of the other programs, they're just maybe a couple of months or whatever.
Currently, we don't have a field for football, but we have all that information.
All right, then I think that would be helpful as we move forward as well.
But we have all, that's the same groups, so, yes, they run, they have them all 12 months of the year. So they get to choose, they run their programs every season.
So are you going to serve?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. And so the three of us will serve, we'll get a report back to you. Again, I can't promise it next month, we've got a short timeframe here, but we will be back to you in January. And is there a motion then on this item, just to suspend this motion, I mean, suspend this item till a meeting in January?
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Motion, any discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those like sign, motion carried. We thank you for being here and not speaking to us, we appreciate it. Okay, the next item is a request for the authorization, I'm sorry, we're backing, I'm backing up a second. The next item is a consideration for, well, nope.
Wow, Mr. Mayor.
It's Ms. Kelsey at this point.
Yes, sir, so.
Mr. Craver. Ms. Kelsey on the fee schedule.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You're on it.
I'm a, okay. So attached to your agenda materials, you'll see the fee schedule. If you'll recall, we did discuss this at our retreat in October. Per your guidance, corrections have been made and incorporated in this document. There are two caveats I'd point out. One is the facility fees are not included, um, in this revision, which we would have effective as 1/1/25. Um, the other item is the commercial downtown sanitation fees. Um, we recognize that actually those fees increased seven percent on April the first of '24. Y'all had actually approved that in '23. So what we are suggesting, um, in this revision is that we would increase fees three percent, and that would be effective for one of '25. Um, I have outlined in my cover letter to you kind of the specific changes, but glad to cover any of those. If you have questions, um, staff does recommend moving forward with approval of these fees.
Okay, this will be, we've had an opportunity to discuss these fees a couple of times. Once, uh, most recently, I think, at the retreat. Um, any questions regarding the fee schedule as presented?
I, I have a question regarding the new information given regarding the three percent increase for, uh, increase for, for the downtown area. What was the increase for the rest of the city? Was it three percent? Does it make sense maybe just to tie the two together? So whatever, this, you know, so everybody just gets the same increase across the city? Or not based on the, the level of service provided?
Here's the history.
Yeah, a, as you may recall, you know, this body voted two years ago to chain the increase for the downtown sanitation program to the Consumer Price Index specifically for commercial garbage. And so that action of this body actually goes into effect beginning on April 1. So we check what that CPI index number was in March and apply that to that number. And so, of course, you could always take an action to change that. But over the past two years, that has taken place, resulting in what Ms. Kelsey mentioned is the seven percent.
And that was the, that was the commercial side, I'm saying the residential.
That's the, that's the Consumer Price Index, the way that they kind of delineate different activities. They're for different trades. There's, this is the one, it's for garbage service, commercial garbage service.
Okay, guys, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I do. Um, I, I won't be voting for this, um, fee increase. You know, one of the things we talked about last time, for the cemetery, that is. Um, one of the things we talked about last time was having Eastview brought up to the standard that we have at Oak Hill, which would warrant the fee increase. And I think the last time we were here, we talked about having, um, pricing information brought to us and that kind of stuff at our next meeting, or at the very least, putting out an RFP. Have we done that?
Working on the RFP.
So it's not been issued yet?
Oh, no, 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 we're working on the RFP.
I, I, I cannot vote for an increase doubling the fee January 1, and we have still got Eastview in the situation that it is. I mean, I just can't, I mean, my aunt was buried there just this past week, and I'm like, and it still looks terrible. I can't, I can't do that. It's not fair. It's not okay. And we don't have to do it. We just don't. It is up to this body. So it is not that, I mean, do it for Oak Hill if you like, but take Eastview out of it until you fix Eastview.
If you'd like to make a motion removing Eastview, Eastview from it and see what happens, then that's your preference.
I will make that motion.
I don't have a second. Okay, motion dies for lack of second. Is there a motion on the amended fee schedule?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign?
Nay.
Passes six, one. The next item is, uh, on the agenda this evening is a consideration of an order and resolution that consumes certain properties for an intersection improvement project.
Yes, Mayor Brady, members of council, this was brought to your attention on October 8th in a meeting, um, where we discussed this project. This project has been part of our, um, capital improvement program for many years. Um, but it involves the intersection improvements, essentially widening and adding a dedicated right lane in front of the Chick-fil-A Dwarf House at the intersection of Highway 30, State Route 34, Bollesboro, Noonan Crossing Boulevard East. So there are four parcels to be considered.
Council has seen these drawings, they're also in your agenda. Mr. Lars here, if you've got any, um, any questions regarding. If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We'll need a motion on each one.
Okay.
Still one, two, three, four?
Yes. Just a motion to adopt the resolution on parcel one.
I make a motion on parcel one.
Second.
Motion to second to adopt the resolution on parcel one. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye, I make a motion on parcel two.
Parcel two, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second to adopt the resolution on parcel two. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Make a motion on parcel three.
Parcel three, thank you.
Second.
Motion to second on parcel three, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye, make a motion on parcel four.
Second.
Geon, thank you for the motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried, ladies and gentlemen. The next item, uh, is the presentation of cost estimates for an alternative plan for the intersections of Jackson and Jefferson. I suspect you're still up on this one.
I'll just stay right here.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the last, uh, the last discussion we had on this, uh, this is the two-way conversion of Clark Street and new traffic signals to coordinate the, the flow through the intersections. Uh, it was requested that we come back with a little more definitive, uh, cost estimates. And our consultant, and Samir's here, if you have any detailed questions that he needs to answer. But we brought back two alternates, namely, one of them has the larger overhead signs and some of the words on them. And that, I believe the cost estimate for all of that work was about 1.33 million. And then there's the one that has the more conventional signs, the smaller signs, and that one was around nine hundred and seventy thousand.
Nine seventy.
Nine seventy. And the difference, obviously, the signage, the, the signs themselves are larger, but they also require structural supports when we use the bigger signs. So that's quite, quite, I think it's a couple hundred thousand dollars just to put those trusses in for those. So that's where the difference is. The rest of the project remains the same. Clark Street's two ways. We have a continuous flow northbound on Jefferson Street. The intersection at Jackson Street remains unchanged, and the signals are controlled from one controller.
Council discussion on spending this type of money for signage?
Do we have to make a recommendation for one project, don't we, to go to the state? Is that right? We have to make a recommendation on one of, one of the other.
In order to move the project forward and get the permits from the Georgia Department of Transportation, we have to tell them what we want. So it'd be a signal permit, and we would submit our design, our prefer, preferred option. Now, they may still come back and make comments on that, but, um, but they need to know what it is we want to do.
Or they might come back and say no.
They may say no. We have been working with them over the years, so they're familiar with the project, they know it's out there. But they, they've gotten to the point that until we tell them what we want, they're not going to, uh, look at it anymore.
Some of us have also gotten to that point. Counsel?
Well, I've, I've looked at it, looked at the signage, and I told Michael this. The only sign that's on there that everybody would recognize is the one for the directions to I-85. And if you start looking, it's very confusing because it says Palmetto to the north and Carlton to the north, but they're different roads, and there's no simple solution of signs. But what Michael said was that 1.3 million something, it's very, very big signs. At some point in time, that's not very what, uh, conducive visually what we see in the city. And people don't know highway numbers, but that's just a problem. I'd say 95% of the people, or maybe 99% of people who go through there a few times, they know exactly what they're doing. But I just think we go with the smaller signs at, uh, $970,000 thing, and it would make it, uh, less expensive, but also give us improvements on that intersection itself.
Can it give us an opportunity to kind of just try it out for?
Pardon?
It would give us an opportunity to try it out for, you know, before spending even more money that we don't know will specifically work. So I'm, I'm, I prefer the smaller signs as well.
I'm not willing, I, my vote is, my opinion is, that I don't want to spend any money on this. $970,000 for something that we're just going to guess the signs may help, and the way they look.
Well, it's not just the signs, it's the traffic flow is what's going to help. Because you've got people coming east on Clark Street that will be going straight to Bollesboro instead of circling down. They have to, they cut the turn on Jackson, then cross over. And meanwhile, you've got people going west on Clark, turn left onto Jackson, and they're trying to cross over to the right side of Jackson, so you have a constant fare. And it will reduce the traffic that comes down. Jackson Street goes Posey, goes back out Jefferson, it'll clean up some of that. I just think it'll do a lot of improvements to the flow itself. And it's nothing perfect there, but it sure is a lot of different problems constantly. You can't get through the intersection sometimes because the light changes so fast, and new signaling will help some of that, we think.
But you said it would still be the old signalization?
I'm sorry?
Did you say it would be the old signalization? No.
No, it's, it's the.
At 970?
970 new.
All new signals, new traffic signals.
They'll be coordinated where they won't be, uh, that particular, if you're coming south on Jackson Street, if everybody doesn't stay tight, four cars might get through. If everybody stays tight, 12 cars might get through. But it's more, it's designed for the east-west traffic to flow constantly, that's the one that controls it. So I just think the new signaling and then, then that lane over there would make a lot of improvements to the flow in general.
I agree. I, I like the, I like the design. I, I, I'm leaning toward, I noticed a lot more money, and I, I'm.
Bless you.
Significant more money, but the larger signs, somebody can pick those signs up further away. And again, making their decision. And if, for us that live here, we don't really need a sign.
Right.
Um, so I'm really thinking about those people, because this continues to, you know, there's a lot going on, and, and the more time we give somebody to make a decision on what lane they're in is going to help us alleviate some of this going on.
That's right.
Especially in light of.
I don't disagree, but you can put the small, you can put more of the smaller signs further away, right?
That's right. We could. Just for perspective, I think the larger one may have been 12 feet long, and the lane is 12 feet, and then it may be six feet tall, which is taller than I am. And so it'd be about six by 12, I think, is the larger of the signs overhead.
What's your, what's your recommendation? Because you know, the, spending all this time on.
I would try to work with the smaller signs. I think the larger sign is, would work better, but I don't think visually it's going to be that appealing in our historic district, and you're going to block the view of some of the historic structures and the mansions and things that are all around that area. Um, the smaller signs are more easily relocated if they get put out there. Not the ones on the, 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 the wires, but anything that's post-mounted, um, can be added or subtracted, you know, is.
One more question. On this drawing, isn't signage near Oak Hill, correct?
Yes, it begins.
Does that include that, that bank that's going across, coming into the intersection from?
Yes.
It is? Okay, good.
Yes. Uh, upper right corner, you see a black line going.
Okay, very good. Okay, I would, you know, we've, they've blown up the monument again.
I saw that.
And that's probably the fifth one in, in, uh, but in my lifetime, it's happened over and over. Except for this, but I think almost a blinking dangerous curve ahead, almost where the cemetery starts. We need to wake some people up, because by the time you get to that signage, it's too late. You've already run into the building. But I know that's not part of this project, but it's something food for thought down the road.
I think, I think it creates problems if you don't fix it too.
I've stopped, I've stopped asking what, what the, the background is to that, that, that particular location for accidents. Uh, there are others, we, we try to find out if there's something going on that we can make a change so that it won't happen, but I quit asking about this one, so.
I'm with you.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we go with the lower price signage, second.
Motion to second, more discussion.
Well, I have a quick question. Mr. Mayor, you were kind of opposed to everything, and I was listening to your, I would like to hear your rationale and your thoughts on that.
I, you know, it's, it's real straightforward. I think it's such a mess that nothing can hap, nothing can fix it.
I'm sorry, Keith, what?
I think it's such a mess that this isn't going to fix it. I mean, I, I think the directional, the sending people in all those directions with the signs the way they are, if you live here, like, like Jim said, you're good to go most of the time. If you're not, if you're not, those signs, you're on it so quickly, you can't tell.
It's already there, that problem you're talking about, and this is going to address some of the flow, not necessarily tell them. They get confused anyhow, they get, I mean, now.
Yeah.
And I don't think they're going to be any less or more confused sometimes, but the flow itself will be better.
Well.
Can I make a comment as well? So, excuse my ignorance here, but, um, where's the funding coming from?
Um, yeah, Flos 2019, this is, uh, budgeted at 1.5 million dollars.
I'm sorry, I was looking, I was looking for it, but I'm, there it is, right here in front of me. I have it highlighted in red, how about that? Um, okay.
I would bring back the actual funding source at time that I was asking for approval of a contract.
Yeah, so here's, here's my question where, um, what the mayor was saying. This has been in, existing for quite some time now. I don't travel that area as much as some do. But I have to wonder, is it really going to do for 1.5 million what we think it's going to do? I mean, that's a chunk of change, so that's my, so I kind of align with, with the mayor on that, it's like.
The number that they're presenting to us tonight is 970.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, 970, but there's a 1.5. 9, 970 is still a lot, a lot of money.
It is. The process here, though, is we, if council approves this tonight, that gives you direction to go back to GDOT.
Yes, sir.
Tell them what we're thinking.
Yes, sir.
To get their, their nod, their approval or not, and then at that point, you go out for a hard bid.
Yes, sir.
For an RFP, so this number could change.
We would go for what they're calling a signal permit. And then we would develop up the plans to 100% construction and bid that out. And come back to you with the actual hard bid and funding source.
Okay. So you're, you're approving what we think is 970 tonight, if you vote that way. Uh, and then come back for the real number for a contract.
Couple months.
At some point in the future.
One thing too, I, I think the engineering firm has current numbers from what, I understand from what Michael told me, because they end that business to start with.
That's correct.
I mean, it can change, everything can change tomorrow, but, I mean, in general, it's not like some jump up big number. And we're still not obligated to do it at this point in time. But I think if we don't get started on something to try to make it better, I mean, this is the only shot we've had, and I think this engineer has worked at it pretty hard because there's no simple solution there.
Okay.
That's going to fix everything.
So one quick question is, what, what is our time limit on SPOS 19 funds? When does it have to be expended by? Because GDOT can take a while.
There, there is a time limit.
Okay.
This would, this, this is a, a 100% locally funded project, so it's, it's more on our schedule than GDOT's schedule, other than their review time.
Does that usually take a while?
Uh, we get in queue, I, I don't know.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, anything else on this? A motion second to approve the lower number? Anything, anyone?
I make a motion, did we approve the lower number? Is that what you're saying?
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign?
Nay.
Five, two.
Nay. Five, two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. We appreciate that, Mr. Clark. Uh, the next item, we're getting into visitors. This is a request for street closures December the 14th, 2024, 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM for Christmas with a cop. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. The next is a request to close North and Southport Square for a quick draw, uh, quick draw paintout on March the 29th, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Mayor, I have one comment. I do want to thank the people that waited to the very end of this agenda.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Thompson, did you have something?
I do have one more thing. Um, Mr. Brady, Mayor Brady and the council, we have about 700 feet of street on Wood Lane Drive that starts at the beginning of Alpine Drive that has no curb and gutter. And it's on both sides of the roads, and it affects five residents. And on one side, there's a lot of erosion that comes down from the rainwater because the rainwater's got nowhere to go except for in the dirt. It's getting close to the road. I took Mr. Phillips out there. He looked at it, and I would like council to direct staff to review this and come back to us with a recommendation slash proposal of action, possible action in the future.
Okay, so he's not asking for approval of expenditure this evening. Is there a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried.
I have one thing as well. I'm, I'm sorry, before we go into executive.
Yes?
I talked with staff a while back, but I would like for us to, along with that, to move into 2025 to start cleaning up, or start the process to clean up the islands for annexation within inside the city. We've talked about that a while, and I think it'd be appropriate, starting next year, to start that process. I know it's lengthy, I guess, but.
Any objection from council? Okay, all right, thank you. Well, we haven't done this, and while anybody have anything else to?
Before you read a sentence, it would take five minutes.
No, after, after we go, then we'll take five minutes before we start. Executive session, please, for legal and real estate.
Yes, sir. I mean, that we now enter into closed session as allowed by OCGA 50-14-4 and pursuant to advice by the city attorney for the purpose of discussing legal and real estate, and that we in open session adopt the resolution authorizing and directing the mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with OCGA 50-14-4, and that this body ratified the actions of the council taken in closed session and confirmed that the subject matters of the closed session were within the exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Second.
Motion is second. We go into executive session for legal and real estate. All those in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we're in the executive session.